Order at seven oh seven P M. And let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Alright, so good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Is that me that's echoing? We've had some significant problems with regards to the reactions that we received from Eversource. So what I did was I asked town council, Rich Matula, to put together a resolution that I would like comment and action on from the board of selectmen. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the resolution first. We'll take a motion in a second like always. And then we're going to go through public comment, or excuse me, selectmen comment on the specific issue. I've asked Tom Amy, our emergency management director, to join us for today's meeting. After we do the resolution, I'm going to ask Tom to give a quick synopsis of kind of what he saw, what his interactions were over the last week or so, so he can give the selectmen firsthand information. Tom and I probably spoke six or seven times a day, it seemed, over the last week. But I want you to hear directly from him, the challenges and the issues that he faced, and the efforts that he had to go through to try to get power back on. Beef, I'm going to give every selectman an opportunity to this is going to be picked up by the media. I got several calls and requests from media wanting the ability to use actual audio snippets. So I'm going to call you out by name. Anytime you speak, please say your name. That way, it's a data file identifiable for any. Be unprepared to rectify the power outages throughout the town of Seymour. And whereas Eversource was not responsive to Seymour public officials regarding the massive outage, the timetable for the restoration of power, and did not have adequate resources in place to restore services in a reasonable manner. Now therefore be it resolved that First Selectman W. Kurt Miller is tasked with exploring the possibility of switching the town of Seymour to the United Illuminating Company service area for the purpose of providing electric power to the resident town of Seymour. Additionally, the First Selectman is fully empowered to engage state officials and other relevant parties for the express purpose of attempting to obtain better, more reliable electric service than that provided by Eversource to the people of Seymour. Be it further resolved that the town of Seymour, by and through its First Selectman, is authorized to join with other municipalities to take such concerted action against Eversource as is necessary to address the present failure to perform by Eversource. Be it further resolved that the town of Seymour hereby expresses its universal condemnation regarding the incompetent performance by Eversource with respect to this essential public service. The people of Seymour deserve better. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Anne Marie.
Alright, so the, I saw Bruno lean first, so Bruno will make the motion, Anne Marie second. Under discussion, so before we start discussion with questions and comments from the selectmen, I'm going to ask Tom Amy, our emergency management director. Tom, if you could please just give us a quick synopsis of what your last week has been like, what your interactions were like, and how you thought things went.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invite. As we all know, the storm hit us basically from one to three o'clock or so Tuesday afternoon. That was enough to cause our damage. What was significant about this is, yes, we had a lot of power loss. Yes, we had some incidents with trees near houses. We had an injury where the tree fallen on a person, is the lack of response by Eversource. Now, over the last fourteen years, I've dealt with several large storms. And every time Eversource has tried to improve a little bit, this time they went five steps backward. We had a, what they call the municipal rep assigned to us liaison, and that party did not join us because of COVID. They stayed remotely. We were on the phone afterwards, that evening on Tuesday night. At eight forty-one, I received a phone call from them again, after several other calls saying, "It doesn't look like Eversource is doing anything at this time. Make safe crews are not enabled yet. We're still trying to wrap our heads around." So with that said, we still have incidents out there. We had Public Works out there. We had fire and EMS crews, police crews, trying to sort through this town, taking numbers, taking addresses of wires and trees and trying to sort it out. Tuesday more, or Wednesday morning, we started out. Tony Di Primo and myself, at five forty in the morning, trying to figure out if Eversource was coming and trying to look at our game plan. And prior to this, we had emails and we had a Zoom meeting in prep for this anyway. But we were trying to wrap our heads and figure out what we were going to do. And Tony had his game plan based of what we, our lessons learned from the tornado. That later that day, at nine in the morning, our Eversource rep called, and he says, "We just got out of an eight o'clock meeting, and they all agreed to have an eleven o'clock meeting because no one had a handle on what they were doing." Typically, we would have someone on boots on the ground, at least driving around, trying to pin. Wednesday morning, again, going into Wednesday further, later at eight fifteen in the morning, my deputy Tim Willis and I drove around town. We took the list the Public Works had, the PD had, what Northwest Public Safety had. We went and verified everything. We then, as a town, turned around and provided out as an east-west list and divided it to trees on wires, wires down, or blocked roads, which are our highest priority, where you don't have an exit out on your roadway from your residence. So with that, we sent that to our Eversource folks, trying to make it as easy as possible when they come into town. We had nothing. Thursday went by, phone calls back and forth with Eversource. They're not ready. They're not sure what we're doing. They were thinking about abandoning what they call as make safe crews and just go straight into restoration. They had arguments. Now, what's significant, and what I had been told, different from the previous storms, is they used to let our municipal liaisons into what they call as their war room, so they can see where the vehicles assigned to municipalities are because of GPS where they're at. They no longer have that access, so they're kept out. So they are also in the dark. Those folks are there, are thrown in as middle folk, middle people, trying to be as a buffer to keep us away as far as on municipality. So we're up to Friday. Now, we're going through everything, trying to organize. Public Works on Thursday sent the crews home early, or normal time, because they're on early schedule, because we had no indication what it means. They were all told, "Come back if necessary." Friday sent them home again. Two thirty after, and Friday afternoon, we get a phone call. "We'll be here at three thirty at Public Works." So we had a meeting at three thirty. We started out, we had our crews with one crew from, from Eversource. Later that evening, two hours later, they freed up a second crew in town to start going through and checking roadways, getting trees off, identifying, making sure power was off. So we started that process. Then they disappeared for another day and a half. We didn't see anything for Eversource. And again, our rep would call me three or four times a day. "Sorry, no progress. Did I see things out that have been assigned or taken, but no detail when it's going to happen." A majority of the town was crippled from a high tension line on one eighty-eight in Oxford, by Oxford High School. That service takes off the top of Great Hill area completely. D O T was aggravated because for six days, that roadway was shut down because Eversource did not come back. First Selectman Temple, we know, hired a company to come in and put telephone poles up right away. Wasn't waiting for Eversource. So the municipalities have been trying desperately to get this process going, and it's failed miserably. As of a few minutes ago, we still have seven residents still without power in this town. And I'll stop at that point right now for you folks.
So as you can see, it's been an extremely frustrating week. You know, Tom and I have been through five, six, seven of these storms now, I think, together. And to Tom's point, Eversource, this is the worst that they've ever been. Now, we obviously understand that when these storms hit, there's going to be a certain amount of power outages. There's going to be a certain amount of people that may be out for two, three, four days. That's unfortunately just what we have to deal with living in New England. But I think the biggest issue, and Tom just kind of jump in here as well, is the complete and total breakdown of communication from the management of Eversource to the towns and cities. And I've spent the last few days talking to many of my peers. They all have the same exact issues, the same exact concerns. So all the struggles that we've had, they're all going through. And quite honestly, for what we pay as residents of the state of Connecticut for electricity, it is absolutely unacceptable when we can't even get information from a person whose only job or responsibility it is during that storm is to provide information to Tom and I so that we can properly coordinate how we're going to move the town services around to help support Eversource. There were times where we said to our rep, "Well, we just saw three trucks sitting in a parking lot in Seymour", and his response was, "Well, I had no idea that they were there." We had roads that were completely blocked, as Tom said, for several days, which puts a tremendous amount of stress on our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, EMS service. They have to come up with different ways. They just can't drive directly to a house if something happens. So that puts public safety in jeopardy. You know, our Public Works Department, I would say, by the middle of the day on Wednesday, had cleared all that they possibly could that wasn't connected to a power line. So we actually went back with our Public Works Department to a normal schedule where they were in the parks, you know, lining fields and things like that, because we just had to sit on our hands for days waiting for Eversource to finally show up. And the frustrating thing was you would see a picture from, I believe it's either New Fairfield or New Milford, and I forget which one. But they had ten or fifteen trucks sitting in a parking lot for twenty-four hours. And we were begging, "Send us one truck with one line person, so we could just have them piggy, from just kind of leapfrog from one Public Works crew to the next, de-energizing these lines and let us clear roads, let us open up roads, so people can start to move around safely." It was beyond frustrating. It was the worst that I've seen in my ten years here. You know, people say, "Why now? And why haven't we taken these actions in previous storms?" Again, it's the communication and the complete breakdown of communication. If you ask Eversource, they think that they were right on top of this, that maybe they just didn't plan well enough. But if you listen to their spokespeople, they're out there saying that, "Hey, we do, we do a great job. Or, you know, we're constantly learning. We're constantly improving." You know, I strongly disagree. They're going backwards. The services is getting worse. You know, Senator Blumenthal, who him and I don't generally agree on much of anything, I agree with him one hundred percent. Eversource needs to be looked at, needs to be examined. They are truly a for-profit company. Now, last year, and this is something that this board had discussed, Tommy was involved in this, Tony Di Primo, our Public Works Director, with improving the tree cutting that was going on in the town of Seymour. So our state representative, Nicole Claris Dietrich, set up a meeting. We sat downstairs in Town Hall, and we went through a plan with Eversource on all of the maintenance and proactive work that they were going to do. I would say that we are lucky if Eversource did half of what they committed to. So these are the problems that we're seeing. It's extremely frustrating. And what I'm asking for through this resolution from all of you is to give myself, Brian Rich, the opportunity to explore other opportunities that may be available for the residents of the town of Seymour. Is it switching over to United Illuminating, if that's a possibility? Is it entering into some type of consortium with other towns and cities that surround us? Is it creating our own public utility? Is it creating some type of lawsuit or class action suit to put more pressure on Eversource? Is it just trying to put pressure on PURA to make some changes? So again, I'm just looking for that kind of broad approval from this board to give us the opportunity to start these processes. Obviously, we'll be constantly reporting back to all of you with updates. We certainly wouldn't take any steps without specific approval from this board. But I think if nothing else, we need to show the residents of the town of Seymour that we feel and understand their frustrations, and we support them, and that we want to do all that we can to rectify this situation. Because I probably received between phone calls, emails, text messages, Facebook messages, three or four hundred communications over the last couple of days. I'm still trying to return calls from, from the weekend, of people just frustrated, and not frustrated because they don't have power, frustrated because they're scared. And they have loved ones that are elderly that can't keep medicine cold, can't keep food cold, can't cool themselves off, don't have water, don't have basic sanitary needs because of power. And we have a company that seems to just not care, just doesn't want to respond. And it's just not right. So I think it's time that this board collectively works together, takes action, I should say, to try to make changes to that. So that's me kind of on my soapbox. I think you could tell I'm a little frustrated. I think most of you saw my Facebook post. I stopped doing Code Reds, quite honestly, because I had nothing to say. I don't know how many more times I could say I have no information. So I just switched to social media to get that out. The one message Tom didn't share, and I think all of you are aware of that, Eversource had to shut down operations because they didn't have a tool on the truck. And they had to have the tool driven in from Reading. And because they didn't have the tool, they had to wait well over an hour to get the tool in. Instead of having the crew sit there, the crew left. So again, we had the potential of getting some folks online faster, maybe. But because they didn't have a Hendrix crimping tool, they had to shut down operations, which how a truck designed to do what it's supposed to do, does that have all the necessary equipment, all the necessary tools, is absolutely outrageous. When we spend the amount of time and effort making sure that our Public Works off, Public Works employees, our police officers, our firemen have the proper tools, have the proper equipment that they need to do the jobs, not only well, but safely. And why a publicly traded for-profit company has trucks out that do not have the necessary equipment on it is absolutely ridiculous to me. So with that, Tom, anything you want to add before I turn it over?
And that, but it's extremely frustrating on myself and other first responders to try to do our best to coordinate, to give, to make sure this community is safe.
Alright, thank you, Tom. Alright, so what I'm going to do is, we're going to, as always, we're going to go kind of in the order as you appear on my screen. That way I can keep track of everyone. So I'll call you out. Again, I ask you to say your name before you start speaking. You can make comment. You can ask questions. Take as much time as you need, and we'll just work through the six selectmen, giving everybody an opportunity to speak and to, and to say their piece. I'll have Brian at the end kind of tie everything up if anybody has any specific legal questions, and then we'll kind of take it from there. So Anne Marie, you are first up in my left-hand corner. So if you'd like to kick it off.
Great, thank you. Anne Marie Grogana, Deputy First Selectman. So the first thing I want to touch base on is Eversource and their lack of preventative maintenance. We discussed several times about you, Kirk, and our state rep Nicole Claris Dietrich, sitting down with the Eversource rep and sitting with the plan, clear cut on the trees. The trees were only cut, you stated, fifty percent, correct?
That's just an estimate.
Okay. So it's an estimate of fifty percent. If they'd done the whole job, would we be in this position that we are in today? We all know the airports have to do a line site for when the air, when the planes come in. Eversource, when I spoke to them, stated, "Every five years, they go out and they cut a tree." Every five years is not good enough. Every year, they should be doing annual sightlines of the tree lines along the wires. Trees grow differently throughout different seasons. Whether we have a hot summer, a wet summer, it's different. Every year, they should be going out doing preventative maintenance. I had a resident on Skoker Act call me and stated that they've called Eversource several times about a tree growing into the wires with the vines, and Eversource has yet to return their call. They said, "Well, the last time..." I take that back. The last time they called them back stated, "Well, you get the tree people in, and we'll send the guy down to drop the line, and then we'll put the line back up." Whose responsibility is it? Is it the tree people? Is it, is it the homeowners? Is it Eversource? Public Works can't be out cutting trees down with high-wire line. So the preventative maintenance is an issue. The line site of trees, they should be doing that annually, not just every five years. And the priorities of restorations, we all know. I was out without power until six o'clock last night. I got my power back at six o'clock last night. I understand the priorities of restorations. I get it. It's utilities, hospitals, senior livings, residential. My next-door neighbor is on medical. You know, she's like, "I'm on medical." I'm not having my pack up. Well, because when I call Eversource, they sit there and say, "You're only on medical because we can't shut your power off, not to hurry up and turn on your power." Well, what good is knowing that you're on medical? The perception of the Eversource and contractors sitting in driveways, state rep Nicole Claris Dietrich and I sat and went by two schools and a church, trucks sitting in the driveway. Representative says, "Well, we've been here for an hour waiting. I'm being told what to do." Really? You're being told. I understand in emergencies. I get it. I understand it wholeheartedly. But the thing is, communication is the key. They need to communicate better. Not only with their people, but with the town and the news, on the radio. Their system crashed. So many people were without power. There are still twelve thousand people without power in the state of Connecticut. May not seem like a lot, but twelve thousand going on day seven without power is still a lot of Eversource people. It is ridiculous. They need to be held accountable. We can sit there and say, as the news says, "Well, the CEO, or the CFO, or this one, or that one." Listen, it's like a big company. I run a small company. I have people telling people what to do. Tom mentioned the war room. In the war room, they should have had the common sense to tell their people, "You're in charge of storms? You do it." They may have ramped up for a level-three storm, whereas you are ramped up for a level-four storm. I'm just using those numbers as a, as a for instance, okay? The fact is, I feel they were not prepared. Someone stated, a resident told me that, "Well, Eversource sends people out of state for the storm that was in North Carolina." I don't know if that's true or not. Matter of fact, if that was the case, shame on Eversource for that. I don't know if that's true, but shame on them. They needed to communicate better with us, with the residents, and it all goes all the way down to their billing purposes as well. Why are my rates so high? Explain why you raise the rates. Don't sit there and blame somebody else. Explain. You know, it's like Ricky Ricardo says, "Lucy, explain yourself. Eversource, explain yourself." Communicate to the people. What else did I have? They put our, they put our Public Works people, our emergency management and our police department in danger by not coming out, by having our fire department go out because of downwires, by having our deputy chiefs going out there, by having Tom going out there. You know, we had to have the police come and protect our Public Works people. People are upset. You don't know who. We have to be sure that if our Public Works are taking trees down or clearing a road, that the wire is not live. But they didn't see the necessity in coming up and making sure that our people were safe. Right? They have to understand, they not, they put a lot of, not only did a lot of people lose their own foods, that food, medicines, babies, you know, newborn babies. My neighbor has a brand-new baby, six days old. What is she going to do? She has no electricity. They have a generator. They need to get it done. Eversource needs to be responsible. In the end, they should have been constantly communicating with towns and cities. It's unacceptable. That's all I got.
Oh, a few, a few responses, I guess, to some of your questions. I tried to take some notes. You know, the first question you asked, "Would things have changed had they done a better job with the proactive stuff?" That's hard to say. I think it might have made it better. How much better, I don't know. You know, some of those trees that fell were trees that were further back. Some of those trees that fell were probably ones they may not have touched. You know, a lot of different things can happen. So, you know, at the end of the day, they need to do a better job on their tree trimming, on maintaining the infrastructure, and cutting sightlines and things back. You know, the frustrating thing, and I think you said it, is the crews sitting and waiting. You know, they had to go through an evaluation process. I think Tommy had the evaluation done probably by the late morning, early afternoon on Wednesday, that we could have provided for them. As soon as those crews came to Seymour, if we were made aware of them arriving, Tommy could have met them wherever they were and said, "Okay, here are the problems. We have a Public Works team, and we have police protection, and go." But instead, they would get dispatched to Seymour. We wouldn't know. They would sit there. They would wait for our, they would wait for information to come in from Eversource, and they would waste literally hours. So that was, was a huge problem. I know Eversource will say that they were not properly prepared for the storm. They didn't anticipate it being as big that it was. To me, that is absolute nonsense. We have these same prep meetings. Tommy calls us all together anytime a storm is coming. We go through a checklist of things that we need to be prepared for. You know, emergency management, maybe they think differently than Eversource does, but they prepare for the absolute worst, so that way they're ready to go. Our people are exceptional at what they do. We were prepared. We were ready. Public Works was prepared and ready. Our police, our fire, our E M S. Everybody was ready to go. For a publicly traded, for-profit company whose only responsibility it is, is to provide electricity, to not be prepared for the worst-case scenario is absolutely ridiculous to me. It's an excuse, and it's an unacceptable one. And again, I don't care how bad of a storm it was. I don't care how many trees were down. I don't care how many people were without power. But having a communication plan as to how you're going to provide information to the towns and cities is unexcusable, because they didn't have that. Whether it's a small storm or a big storm, the procedure should be exactly the same. And it's not like they haven't had these storms in the past. They've gotten significantly worse. So they'll tell you that they learn something every storm. They get a little bit better every storm. I disagree with that a hundred percent. They have gotten worse from, since the day I started this first selectman back in two thousand and eleven till now. It has gotten significantly worse with them. And then, you know, the last thing, on Friday, when the first Eversource crews finally arrived, we took the time to hire private-duty police officers to go out with our Public Works teams to protect them. Because we had some concerns as to how upset residents would be, because they've been sitting without power. And now suddenly crews are showing up, and they're going to, they want to take it out on somebody. And if they see our Public Works guys, they see a line crew, they're going to want to take it out on them. And those are absolutely the last people that that should have happened. So we had the police officers go with our, with our Public Works guys. We, the town hired them ourselves to protect our people. And we had an incident where the police had to break off. we had an incident where the police had to break off and address something else. We had to stop work at a location up on the hill, because a resident came out and was causing all sorts of problems. And the line crew and the public works guys said, "It's, we just can't stay here. It's not worth our safety," and they left. So, you know, we're taking the steps necessary to do the right thing. Eversource completely fell down on the job. Tommy, anything you want to add to Amory's that I may have missed her?
Tom, Amy, again. I believe you covered it, and just, Eversource didn't know what was going on on their level, on the liaison to them. We would wait, and we would be the one who would give them back the information. Hey, you go-
Tommy, unmuted.
Sorry. You have this crew here going over to there. You know, they had no knowledge. And again, Eversource at one point was contemplating not to do make safe, which they pushed out after a few years ago. They were wanting to go straight to restoration. So internally, they were really mixed up, is the honest, easiest way to say this.
I agree. But even ten percent would have been better than anything, right? Ten percent is better than nothing. I, I'm disappointed in the way Eversource has handled this. I'm disappointed in the way they're treating their customers. I'm just disappointed in them all together, no matter what they do. What if the storm was stronger? What if we had those tornadoes come through like we had, you know, two years ago? Then what? Then where would we be? I think Eversource needs to treat every storm as if it's a hurricane five.
And the echo for added effect from Amory on that one. So, all right. So, next, Al, you're next to, you're one to Amory's rights.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller, Al Bruno, Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to go over a couple of facts before we, you know, get into questions. I'd also like to hear folks have all their input before I start asking other questions. So, I'd just like to start us off. I don't want to be redundant, so I cut out a couple of things Amory's already said. Just, just to kick us off here, Eversource increased its electricity charges in July, as we all know, in the middle of the summer, the height of the summer. I thought that was a classless move personally, and I'm sure people didn't appreciate it in town. The company grossed $252 million in the second quarter of 2020, which was up about $31, $32 million from the previous quarter. Their operating revenue jumped to $1.9 billion, so almost $2 billion, in a jump in their operating revenue. And according to a Form 10K report submitted by Eversource to the Securities and Exchange Commission in February, it's a mandatory document, the five highest compensated employees earned a combined $40 million in 2019 in salaries, stock awards, pension, and incentives. CEO Jim Judge alone made $19.8 million last year before taxes. So his income rose from $14.9 million to $19.8 million last year. So, this is the CEO of the company. And to quote Judge from Business Wire, he said, quote, "Eversource's 8,300-member team of employees compiled a tremendous record of achievements in 2019, providing both top-tier service and best-ever reliability to our customers, diligently maintaining a safe work environment, providing a steady partner to our communities, as we all work to decarbonize New England, and providing a superior return to our investors," end quote. Providing a superior return to our investors. Jim Judge, Eversource Chairman, President, and Chief Executive Officer. Mr. Judge is obviously delusional. These are the quotes that Kurt was alluding to. This is the culture and the attitude he was alluding to when Kurt spoke before about the complete and total breakdown of communication. Mr. Judge's company failed again. They mishandled this mass power outage in wake of tropical storm Isaiah. There was a plan in place from multiple historic storms the past decade. Eversource has not seen a tropical storm before. They've seen hurricanes, blizzards, much worse storms. This was a failure to execute the plan, like Kurt said. So, just in quick closing, I'd ask my fellow board members, how long will Seymour be the Charlie Brown to Eversource's Lucy holding the football? Eversource's performance was an absolute disgrace. Again, they put a lot of people at risk, as Kurt and Tom, Amy have alluded to. Our elderly, our people with disabilities, newborns, people had recently undergone medical procedures. I'm not talking about the inconvenience of not having air conditioning in 2020. I'm talking about putting people at risk in our community. As Kurt said, again, a complete and total breakdown of communication. This is unacceptable. As the Who's said, "We won't get fooled again. It's time for change and action," and I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. And just to kind of build off one of your comments, Eversource has already said that their intention is to go to PURA to ask to have the costs associated with this cleanup passed on to the ratepayers of the state of Connecticut. And after, you know, announcing record revenue numbers, like they've had themselves massive salaries and bonuses and stock payouts, the fact now that they want to pass these costs after already trying to pass massive rate increases on to the residents of Connecticut is absolutely unexcusable. So.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, thank you, Al. So we'll continue moving down the line. Trish Danko, you are next.
I also support the resolution. I'm not one of the individuals who lost power. I had flickering the day of, but was fortunate enough to retain power, but know many who are, you know, have been without all week. I did some of the research that Al did already. I won't regurgitate that. But what I will say is, I think it's sad that today, Eversource said that they met their self-imposed goal to have ninety-nine percent back in store with electricity before the end of this evening. And it's a week later after the storm. I'm also reading the same excuses about the self, I think they said self-imposed vegetation was no match for them between storm Isaiah and, and their, their resources. My issue with them comes more with, I don't want to say excuses, because Mother Nature is a feat in and of herself, but it's every time they're talking about being proactive, which I can appreciate, but they seem to fall through on their promises and the communication. So those are two big ones for me, is just having the ability to communicate with the sources, the towns, the people that they need to be in touch with, and following, you know, a proactive plan is only as good as you follow through with it. So, I do support the resolution. I just want to caution that whatever steps we do take and whatever is really, you know, Kurt, I appreciate you saying you're gonna bring back any ideas that, you know, are decided to the board, only because we want to be careful that what we follow through with isn't just masking the problem. Just moving to United Illuminating is just changing who we're paying. So, I mean, I think we're all aware of that. So I just want to be really thoughtful that we're going to hold the right people accountable and take the right actions that benefit our residents. And I don't really care what the reason is. I mean, if you're elderly and you need the A C to stay cool, if you have medicines you need to stay refrigerated, I mean, it doesn't matter. In this day and age, with all of the talk over the past many years, storms, and the empty promises of how they're going to do better and have a better plan and behave proactively, so we don't see these kinds of issues. We really just want to make sure we're holding the right people accountable and coming up with solutions where we might make changes that are benef, truly beneficial to the residents and to us as a municipality. So that's really what my ask is.
Okay. Well, just a couple things off of that with, you know, with regards to the communications. You know, living in New England, I think we have a certain expectation that we're going to have storms, particularly in, you know, August, October, August, October timeframe. We, you know, essentially hurricane season, and we know that there's gonna be times where we're without power. So I think the frustration is not as much with the loss of power, but again, the complete and total breakdown of communications. We had residents on Thursday that received emails and text messages saying that their power would be back on by six o'clock that night. Those folks did not get power back until yesterday. So when we brought it to the attention of our municipal rep, the municipal rep said, "Oh, I didn't even realize emails went out." So again, emails went out mistakenly. They then corrected them to say, "Nope, they're still in the evaluation stage." But now you, you know, it's a yo-yo effect with people's emotions. When people are communicated the proper information, whether it's good or bad, they have a realistic understanding of what's going on, and they can kind of get through it. If they know realistically, "I'm not gonna get my electricity back until tomorrow," okay, I can prepare for that, and I can work my way through it. But when I'm not getting-
But I'm interested with the response, Kurt, because once again, like Al alluded to, the valley is just, "Oh, they'll get over it, and we're gonna say something to appease them," because again and again, that communication failed, because every time someone reached them and said, "This is the case. This is what we..." Oh, I wasn't even aware trucks were there. Oh, I wasn't even aware communication went out. Well, obviously, they have a salary that's really not worth its weight in paper, right? So.
Right. Oh, and that's, I agree with you a hundred percent. And, you know, and to the comments of United Illuminating, listen, United Illuminating has their own issues. They have problems as well. But in talking to some of the other mayors and first selectmen, one of the things or a common theme that I heard about United Illuminating is, you know, they underpromise and overdeliver, it seems. So what they'll do is say, "Okay, we're gonna have people, everybody's gonna have the power back on by Tuesday night at six o'clock." And what you see is everybody's getting the power back on Sunday and Monday. So again, they're setting an expectation, and they're meeting it. Eversource was not even, was not even doing that, and that was a huge problem. And, you know, one last follow-up on your points, you know, we don't know yet which direction we're ultimately gonna go. So before we even take any steps, that will all come back to this board for open and honest discussion. You know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, "Why don't you go and start your own electric company," kind of like Wallingford does, and how successful that is. Well, Wallingford started that a hundred years ago. So, they've had the opportunity to kind of build into that. There's a tremendous amount of expenses, infrastructure that goes along with that. This day and age is probably cost prohibitive to do something like that. But, so I'd want to look at all of those avenues. Let this board have those open and honest discussions. Let residents weigh in, and then make a decision that's best for the town of Seymour as to how we, how we move forward. So, going next, we have Rob Van Agen.
Hi, everyone. I'm not, I'm also not going to duplicate any of the things that have already been said. They were said very intelligently and eloquently by my fellow board members. I think we're all very visibly frustrated, and I'm glad that everybody's very easily coming together on this. We all seem to be on the same page. I do want to start off right off the bat by saying, Kurt, thank you for your time through this. Tom, Amy, thank you, and the public works for being ready, even though Eversource was nowhere to be found. So I think it shows that Seymour has its act together, and I appreciate that very, very much. Like I said, a lot of the things that I had written down have been echoed. The utter lack of communication is horrible, and I've just felt like we've been in a situation where, you know, we and everybody else who is beholden to Eversource has been that frog in water, and slowly, they've been bringing it up degree by degree by degree, hoping nobody was gonna notice. As Al said, I mean, you look at the amount of money they're taking in, the amount of money they're paying themselves. The very least they could do is give us the top-notch service, or just a very basic service or communication. So something has to be done, and for that, I wholeheartedly support us looking at all of our other options, everything on the table. More than that, again, the way the town has come together for each other has been a testament to what great people we are. So thank you, Kurt, for your leadership. Thank you, everyone who's done everything they can. And that's all I'm gonna say about this. Thank you.
You know, Robin, you bring up a good point. We're blessed in this town. First, you know, our professional staff, you know, our public works, our police officers, they were exceptional throughout this, putting in tons of hours of overtime, working hard, trying to keep people safe. You know, the public works guys, how they're still standing, I don't know, because they basically went around the clock for a few days. And then once we had a wait, or starting to wait for Eversource, they just went right back and started doing their regular jobs, doing what needs to be done, staying ahead of things. So, you know, that's certainly commendable. And then our volunteers, you know, our firemen, our ambulance guys, and Tommy himself, you know, these folks are volunteers, and they essentially worked around the clock for six days, keeping this community safe. And we're blessed to have all of these people. And that's why, from our perspective, things went so well. I mean, there was a lot of communication. There was a lot of planning. But it's just dedication that these people have for their community, for their fellow residents. You know, if Eversource had one one-hundredth of the dedication and the desire to do what's best for the town of Seymour, it would have been substantially better. So we are truly blessed to have the people that we do working with. And it's an honor for me to get to work with them every day. So, Mr. Finley, you are next up.
Sorry, I had to find my mute button. Yeah, I had to throw out the thank you to yourself and Tom, Amy, and Tony Di Primo, and the team, the, you know, Department of Public Works, the police and fire, everybody, you know, doing what they need to do to get the job done. I'm gonna get away from the actual storm. Let's put it all into perspective. This storm hit the entire state very hard. Many other towns were in the same boat as we were, and Eversource didn't react. We all, we all know that. And I support the resolution that you're throwing out there. I think the one thing I want to throw in front of that, though, is, you know, instead of us, it was bad that they reacted. They're gonna have to deal with that as a company and give us a reason why, and that's what I want to hear from them. But I also am thinking about it from a, what have they done to maintain Seymour to minimize the effect of the trees on the lines that they support? And, you know, are we, you know, working with Eversource before the storms come to try and minimize things by reducing, because we have a lot of trees that are grown through poles, and it's a maintenance item. It's something that happens every year. Trees grow through the lines. They grow close to poles. And we really, they should be coming into town and evaluating that and reducing that before the problem comes. So where I'm looking at it from is, is there, is there a way, you know, should we be talking to Eversource about how to improve that, or any, then if it's gonna be U I, how would they would improve that, so we don't have as many problems as we had in this storm? That's the first thing that comes to my mind, because the storm is what it was. It happened. A lot of trees came down across the state, put a lot of people out of power, and they did not manage that well whatsoever. So I would, I would look to whatever we do moving forward, and whoever we link up with, I want a plan that tells us how they're gonna come in over time prior to this happening, and clean up the trees that are in, that are in lines, so we have less problems when these things happen. Every storm, we're gonna have some type of problem. That's part of the gig living in New England. But we can reduce that- But we can reduce that by proper maintenance. I, I wanted to ask the question Kurt to you because you mentioned, you know, something about in the past, they might have been a little bit better. Has there been a history of failure with Ever Source or, and you mentioned it got progressively worse? Has there been a change in the people that we deal with? Has that been a part of the problem?
There has been a change this storm from our normal person who was, who's generally embedded with us. I would say for the last, Tommy, three or four storms, we've had the same gentleman, Jim Beatrice. Who would come and he would be in the EOC with us. He would provide information, he would, he, he's there with us. So he would understand our frustrations, our concerns. He's hearing exactly what we're saying and passing that information on. But to Tom's point, Ever Source made an internal. Policy change. Where these folks are no longer allowed the access that they used to have in the war room. So, you know, previous to this, we could give Jim all of these concerns and issues. He could go right back to the war room, or if he was actually there, he can go and look on the screen. And see exactly what was going on in Seymour and kind of give us up to the date information. That is not Ever Source's policy anymore. So we kind of missed out on that. These, we'll call them municipal liaisons. Came from probably, Tommy, what, five or six years ago where we had a storm and they didn't provide any of this. And all the towns and cities pushed back saying, hey, we're not getting information. So Ever Source said, well, why don't we just embed these people in your EOCs and you'll have the direct contact. Which everyone said, that's a great idea. We'll have this, you know, this one-on-one touch with Ever Source, we'll get information back quickly. But each storm, it seems, less information was being provided to, to these liaisons. Less information was coming to us and it was getting harder and harder. Tom, if you want to jump in?
Yes, and if folks remember after CLMP and then changed to Ever Source. Is it because we had a disaster across the board between the blizzards and the October snowstorm? So they changed namesakes to get away from that. They changed how they compute and how we have access to, or general public to their outage maps. They've changed them two or three times in, into a lesser effect that you really can't see what's going on. Every event that they've tried and adjusted to, it's gotten worse for us in public safety. And municipalities to manage this on our side of the coin. Again. People are, their team was out there, once they got out there, their team worked with us quite well. It's getting that team, the two and a half to three delay, days of delay. Is what we're really questioning in their management skillset.
Yeah, so I, and I understand that all. I think the only thing I'd ask as part of this is we make sure that. We communicate that to Ever Source. Because they need to do better and we need to communicate that message to them and their top management. So of all this, you know, whatever decision we make, wherever we want to do moving forward. That message has to be delivered by you, the board, to Ever Source directly. So that they can manage that moving forward. Because whether we leave them or not, they need to fix that for the state. Hey, I just want to make sure Kurt that whatever we do. That we do get a maintenance, a more of a maintenance plan versus a proactive versus a reactive plan. With whatever business we're going to team up with here.
Yeah, if we, if we go with, you know, if we do make the switch for whatever reason, whether it's the UI or whomever. That will be something that is absolutely discussed and reviewed. If we do stay with Ever Source. We'll be bringing them back in again to go back through that and ask, you know, where they are, why they're doing it. And hold them even more accountable than we have in the past to make sure that the work is getting done. But the end of the day, they will always give the excuse and, and after, you know, Al's comments from before. It all comes down to money and we only have a certain amount of money to spend. And we have to spend that money, you know, as wisely as we can, or they'll come up with these, these different things like that, but.
And then we'll bring up the salaries that were spread across.
Yeah, and that's, you know, when you, when you're bringing in increases in revenue like that. That money should be reinvested into the infrastructure, making upgrades, making things better as opposed to. You know, giving bonuses to your top executives, giving stock buyouts to your top executives. And then having the audacity though to say, well, yeah, well, you know, the storm cost us forty or fifty million dollars. Pura, we need to pass that on to the rate payers because we shouldn't have to pay that. I mean, that's just.
There's no contractual obligations for them to bring up power. They can, they just do it by good faith and reliable time. Is that probably the only thing they would contract? Contract uptime with them.
And, you know, to be honest with you, they're the only game in town. So it's not like we can just snap our fingers and have, you know, somebody else come in. If this was, I don't know, any other service that the town provides, a contracts through. There's a hundred different choices. If the town's electrician is doing a bad job. There's twenty-five other electricians that we could have tomorrow. I mean, you saw paving of the roads, the town wants to spend, you know, five million dollars. We had six or seven companies lined up. Ready to spend that money. If the company that we choose is not holding up and doing what they're supposed to be doing, we just jump right to the next. Unfortunately, with Ever Source, we don't have that, that option. And they know that and they can be very cavalier with it because essentially it's what are you guys going to do? So we're at that phase and we're saying we want to do something.
Yeah, the delivery of the energy is, that is definitely true, but the commodity, the product can be purchased by anyone, right? So.
Correct, right. But the expensive part is the poles, the wires.
And residential business isn't where they make their money, so.
No, absolutely not. And I'm going to be honest with you too, since we switched to streetlights. They've treated us definitely different than we had in the past. That was a very challenging and cumbersome process. I mean, Rory can speak firsthand because he kind of managed that project for the town. But once we had made the decision that we were going to buy our own streetlights and switch to all the LEDs and take that to themselves. You know, service got even worse because now they're not making money. And that's their whole goal. So now they started to take that out on us a little.
I brought that up within my household, that the fact that, you know, if we don't buy the commodity from them and just the delivery. And other towns do both, I am going to guess that they get first dibs on anything. I don't know that for fact, but I would, I would assume that'd be the case.
Yeah, which is a shame because the town saved upwards of a hundred thousand dollars a year on that, making that change. But, you know, weighed against people being out of power for, you know, six, seven, eight days. Is that how, you know, how much is that? What's the true value of that hundred grand in those, you know, in those scenarios? So.
Well, thank you and, and thank you to everybody again. I appreciate everybody's efforts in getting this, getting everything up and running again, so.
Not a problem. Chris Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And thank you, everybody who went ahead of me. Christopher Bowen, Board of Slick. A few prescient facts stand out to me. One, in addition to the financial data that Mr. Bruno mentioned. There was a two dollar and seventy-one cent per stock dividend paid out to shareholders last year. And another fact is that they are a publicly traded company. Publicly traded companies are responsible to their shareholders and nothing more. They are not, we are not, and they're not answerable to us. They're answerable to their shareholders. We happen to be one of their customers. So when you break down the reality of it. Everything that we're seeing now is a byproduct of their desire to make more profit off of our citizens. And cut corners in places where we can't see that. And I noticed a trend in something else that's been a problematic issue lately. In regards to the WPCA issues that we're having with the company that provide our sewer service. Once again, private company that is only answerable to themselves. And know they're the only game in town. We have no other options other than Ever Source. So, and they know that. And I think they are using their leverage, as Mr. Miller mentioned. To kind of turn the screws on us ever since we went with the more cost efficient lights. We have two companies that have put our citizens, especially in this case. Put our citizens in danger. And I do not use that word lightly. I've spent multiple disciplines from the military on. Learning how to prepare for the worst case scenario. They not only did not prepare for the worst case scenario. They let it come and put our people in danger. They put our elderly people in danger who need their air conditioning. Who need their medication cool. They put our children in danger who can't be sitting in a ninety degree house in the middle of the day. They put our regular residents who have generators in danger. Our state representative made mention that her CO2 alarms went off. What if those alarms malfunctioned? What if they tested their alarms properly and everything was good, but at the last minute they malfunctioned? What if, what if that happened to somebody else in town? Thousands of our citizens were put in danger by corporate malfeasance. And this is two strikes now and I'm not willing to hazard a third. I support this resolution. To explore our options and I will take, with the rest of the board, I will take our options into account. I am making a statement of intent right now that. Our citizens are not revenue generators. They're people with families, elderly, children, et cetera. We have sixteen, seventeen thousand people in this town. And they are not a bottom line for somebody's stock report. I am prepared to consider as a top priority. Any additional costs that we need to have to change this. And I'm not sure that UI is the, is the proper option. Because I used to have UI. I used to live literally on the Derby side of the Seymour Derby border. And when UI screwed up, we would pass a, we would actually pass with covered, covered with tinfoil. Extension cords over to our friends who had at the time CLMP and vice versa. So United Illuminating is not necessarily the solution here. They just happen to suck less. And. I am prepared to consider, everybody brings up the Wallingford issue. I think that's something to consider. I think we need to take this opportunity to do very broad, very bold moves. Because we need somebody who's accountable to our citizens and. Our boards in charge of our critical life important utilities. I am not prepared, I am prepared to fight. To get away if possible from this for-profit model. That has put our people in danger so that a few executives can make some bonuses. I will put my career on the line for that. If it becomes controversial. It's time for a bold change and I'm calling on everybody to consider that, knowing that this could be. Costly in the future from a monetary value. It's time, lives are mine.
You know, you bring up an interesting point when you talk about the setup of. Ever Source and how it's a for cost, a for-profit company. Whose primary responsibility is making money for its shareholders. And should the only, essentially the only game in town for municipalities. Shouldn't that company be run by essentially mayors and first selectmen? And shouldn't it be essentially a not-for-profit company? That money that is made is either A, passed back to its rate payers and reduce rates. Or sent directly into infrastructure and now a substantially smaller scale, I get it. But the valley has VEMS who handles our paramedic service. Which is essentially run by, you know, municipal representatives from the five or six towns. Tommy, I think was one of the founders of that way back in the, in the nineteen forties when he was a younger guy. But how well that works? So could it be something as simple as Pura turning around and saying, okay, Ever Source, you are no longer. A publicly traded company. Obviously, it's not as simple as that. But you need to have a board that's made up of eighty-five percent of mayors or first selectmen or something like that. So the towns and cities have a much larger say in actually what's going on. And holding these folks a little bit more accountable than they are. I think you're going to start to see pushes for things like that coming. As, you know, the, the talk of regionalization becomes bigger and broader outside of this issue. But with mayors and first selectmen looking for ways to provide better service at a cheaper rate for our residents. That could be something you could see coming, coming down the road.
Kurt, this is Bob Finley, just to add to that. You can see a lot of town, what happened in Massachusetts where they, it gets gas, it's not electric. Or where they actually blew up a house and someone died. And Columbia Gas was the gas utility there at the time, Massachusetts actually moved them from the state. So they're no longer able to do business in Massachusetts. So stuff like that does happen. I mean, that's at a worst case scenario, but that does happen to those type of companies.
Now imagine if that happened to the Claritas family. Because that almost happened.
Yeah, it could have been a bad, a, a bad situation.
Forget the fact that she's our first select woman.
Did I get fired? Did I get fired?
State representative, my mistake. You would think I of all people would know that. No, I, I bring that up because that's a family of three. Two people who are prominent citizens in town and I believe their son is still home from college. So those are very, that's a family that could have had the worst happen to it. Sorry, I'm wrangling my dog. So the thing that gets me is that not only were our citizens in danger, but as mentioned before, Tom's crew was put in danger. Because Mr. Amy, I believe your crew is not trained in live power line management. What if one of his crew got zapped? This is just. We're seeing the worst case scenario. For private profit management with something that is not optional. And I think it's time to consider a change.
All right, so everybody's had an opportunity to, to speak initially, ask questions. Is there anyone that would like to say something additional? Just throw a hand up so you don't all talk at once. All right, so Emery, go ahead.
So just a couple of things, just to know. Ever Source can raise rates in January and in July. They picked the worst time to raise the rates, especially during a pandemic. And when people are losing their homes and can barely afford their rent, they should have said, hey, let's beg off on this rate. And not do the rate increase in July. They could have held off. But they're governed only in July, only in January and July can they do these rates. On Pura, I want everybody to understand, because I don't know if everybody realizes this, but the Pura board is a. It's seen and run overseen by the DEP. But the governor appoints the people on those boards. The Pura board is appointed by our governor. I just want everybody to know that because I'm not sure if everybody realized that, even though Pura is overseen and withheld within the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. That's people are actually appointed by our governor.
Correct. I believe there's, if I'm not mistaken, three members serving six-year terms. Two had been appointed by Governor Malloy and the current chairwoman was just appointed by Governor Lamont. So, but again, that's where we'll be taking. A lot of our initial actions to, to the Pura board. To get their feedback, comment and so on and so forth. And then, once we have that, obviously we'll be doing that through Rich and Brian's office. They'll be kind of leading that charge for us. At once we determine what, if anything, actions could be taken, well, we'll kind of take it from there. Is there anybody else who wants to add? Trish, go ahead.
I would just like to say as a board, since we're going to Pura, I would like to think we would all support with. The financial background that Al shared, that he encouraged them to not agree. And to charge the, anyone in the state for anything that the, the storm cost them. Because if they have to pay for it out of their own pockets, they might then think twice before giving those kinds of bonuses. giving those kinds of bonuses and raises, and putting more of that money towards managing their infrastructure a little better.
Oh, agreed. And I'm just flipping back through my emails. I received a notice that on Monday, August twenty-fourth, at ten AM, there'll be a public hearing that PURA is holding to talk about Eversource's rate increases. So, again, it's, it's something that is on PURA's radar. Well, it's a Zoom meeting, but that's the way all the public meetings are up.
I understand, but I would still support us, even as small of a municipality as we are in the scheme of things, I would support us sending some-
Oh, there, there will be testimony from us that will be sent, as well as a strong contingent from CCF. That will be their testify. Yep. So, anyone else with comments or thoughts?
One quick point. I just want to point out that Beacon Falls, somebody from Beacon Falls is one of the three PURA members, so we actually have some local representation there, which is, I think, a good thing.
Yes, the vice chairman of PURA is from Beacon Falls. Yes. Brian, anything?
No, Mr. First Selectman, other than the resolution that's been moved and seconded this evening, is clear and will provide you, as first selectman, with the authority and the tools to address this lack of response by Eversource, and will allow you to obtain accountability, better performance, and service to the Seymour residents, should you pass this, I believe.
Excellent. Okay, since, since this, you know, everybody's had an opportunity to speak, I think this is an extremely important vote. And I know generally, we just, all in favor, opposed, abstained, and it's kind of a group vote. But I think something of this magnitude, something of this importance, I think deserves a roll call vote, so that way, your name is called, and you have the ability to vote the way that you feel is appropriate. So, I'll go through, I will call your name, and I will ask you to vote. So, we will start, and again, the order, the screens keep moving, so I apologize. But Trish, Trisha Danka.
Aye.
Trisha Danka votes aye. Al Bruno.
Aye.
Al Bruno votes aye. Emery Dragonis.
Aye.
Emery Dragonis votes aye. Robert Finley.
Aye.
Robert Finley votes aye. Christopher Bowen.
Easiest aye I've ever had.
Christopher Bowen votes aye. Robert Van Agan.
Aye.
Robert Van Agan votes aye. I vote aye as well. So, this resolution passes unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. So, I very much appreciate everyone's time. To Brian and Rich, thank you for creating this resolution for us, understanding the concerns that the residents of Seymour had, and putting that on paper. Just as some information for the board, tomorrow, I plan on speaking with some different media outlets to kind of push this, and then I'm also going to be forwarding this resolution onto several other mayors and first selectmen, asking them to entertain a resolution similar. I know I spoke with State Senator Kevin Kelly today. Ken Kellogg, who is the first selectman of Monroe, is also considering something very similar to this. So, hopefully, next week, we could have four, five, six, seven, eight other local towns that will join us in these types of resolutions, because again, I think the more towns and cities come together, the more voices are going to be heard by PURA and the governor's office to make some actual changes to the way this is done. So, are there any other additional comments by any of the selectmen? Because now we're in just the regular selectmen's public comment portion, which is item number four. Or any?
At this point, I propose a motion to adjourn.
You can't.
Well, Chris, hold on one second. So, are there any other comments? Because I know a few of you turned your microphones off, but if you want to have, make an additional comment, just throw your hand up. Okay, everybody's, everybody is, is good then. So, with that, before we make the, hold on, hold on, hold on. Before you make your motion, and Chris sings it from the dark, again, I just want to thank everybody, you know, for their time today. I think it is extremely important that the residents of the town of Seymour see this unity of the Board of Selectmen, that we understand the problems that they went through, the frustrations that they have, and that this board stands one hundred percent together to work to try to rectify and make things better for the town of Seymour going forward. Again, our state delegation, you know, Nicole, Eric, and Kevin, spoke to all of them multiple times during the storm. They were very active, very helpful, trying to get things done, kind of pushing behind the scenes, using some of the lobbyists and things that they have, which was extremely helpful. So, thanks to them. And again, I don't think we can thank our team here enough, again, for our public works folks, police, fire, ambulance, Tom, for the hard work, again, that he does as a volunteer. You know, we can't thank our team enough for the hard work and effort that they put in. So, again, thank you very much for everybody coming together. This community is, is always better when it stands together. Emery will show off her shirt, the Seymour Strong shirt. I think that that just kind of signifies where this town is and how we're all gonna work together to, to make this a better, a better situation for all of us. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Anne Marie, who raised her hand nicely, second by Chris. Is there any discussion?
I'm not in the mood to sing tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Mark the meeting closed at eight twenty-five PM. Thank you.